Welcome to the Thursday, April 27th, meeting of the Northampton Planning Board. We've got one, two, three, four, five items on the agenda tonight. The first item is a seven o'clock site plan. Rachel Borson, wave design standards. Element two, to allow for an alternative front door facing the street at One Garfield Street, Florence, map ID seventeen D dash oh eight one. Thank you. I'm sorry, we, we open meetings with public comment. So if anyone has anything they want to bring to our attention that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do it. I was tipped off by the, the nature of the crowd. Now, I've already introduced the first item number. Carolyn, you want to give us a little background on this?
Sure. So if you recall the zoning, and I put this in the, in the staff memo, but for the URC, A, B, and C districts, there are sort of these minimal design requirements for by right development for single-family home. Single-family home is definitely allowed by right in this case, and there are, some of those standards are waivable by the planning board. This happens to be one of them. The idea is that the front door of new homes should, these, that are essentially infill lots within existing neighborhoods should face the street, but the board has the jurisdiction to allow alternative layouts on a case-by-case basis. So this is site plan, it's not a special permit, so site plan means that it's a simple majority of the board that approves, and you're just really looking at that design element, not really anything else related to the site.
So the question before us, is the front door on this design acceptable, given what we were intending to do when we wrote the design standards?
And, and the other thing I might add as well is that the reason, as you can see in the applicant will describe in more detail, the, the door is not on that front plane, the facade of the building, and that's what the building commissioner felt that it would be, that's what, why he wanted to send it to the board for approval, because that was his interpretation of how that went out.
Can you give us a quick explanation of how it's on the law?
Yeah, sure. Dory Brooks from Kenneth's with the Architects. So part of it, the challenge of the site itself is that the site doesn't have a single front face. This, according to the comprehensive permit that was granted for the property, this is the street here. It's not, this is a, an access easement to the property. There's a lot of other complicating histories for the property itself, but in interpreting that lot and looking at the guidelines, our intention was to be sure that the door faced the street, which is what the language says. So we angled the door this direction intentionally. It's a very, fairly small lot with conservation area to the, to this direction. So the intention was to put the living area looking that direction, and that really made this a premium space for the owner. So that's why we have these two volumes and how we've arranged them in an angled way, so that the angling allows it to really gesture to the street, so that you would really see this. Nobody would ever approach from here. There's no road, there's no sidewalk, there's just a gully essentially, you know. So that made sense to us. So it was a bit of a surprise to have that response and to even bring it forward, but I understand the guidelines are somewhat traditional in their assumption and...
I think probably the building inspector is still working with them too. I mean, he's a fine fellow, but I mean, I think we are all trying to find, you know, the sort of static status for those. Are there any opinions about it of the board members or any questions of Dory?
It's just, it's a funky site, you know, it's, it's a...
I think infill lots will characteristically come to us that way.
Yes. Yeah. It's nice to see that finally get built on though.
And, and the door is in the front, it just doesn't face?
It faces the front, it's not on the facade.
This I found is easier to see it, so this is actually a, sort of the bedroom volume, this is the living room volume, and this is where you want to get people in, and that's facing this plane. So the 3D gives it a little bit easier view of it. And it's also, we tried to scale it to, in association with the houses in the area, despite the, so it's only seventeen hundred square foot house on a fairly small lot. As you know, it's a narrow lot for the competition. So yeah, it's been a challenging lot to work with, and we're certainly doing our best to address all those issues, but that often happens with your comments.
Any other comments or questions?
I just think they've been really, really creative. I think it's great to kind of see you try to figure out how to use this site, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it at all.
Yeah, I don't either. In fact, I was thinking about it, like if you had enclosed a three-season porch, which many houses of age have done, then you wouldn't have the front door on the front facade for many houses in town. So that's kind of the way, it, it seems fine with me. Any other discussion or question?
He brought it in front of us, but at the same time, he, he approved it.
Yeah.
So he, he chimed in and said it's...
Yeah, he, he circled back and said that. I think if, if he, he just felt like he wanted assurance from us.
Which is fine, yeah.
So could I get a motion on seven o'clock item?
On public comment?
Sorry. Yes, we do have a new member of the public in. Would you like to comment on this project? There's no need, I don't think I need to...
Motion to close public comment?
That's a motion to close, and second, closed public comment that was really only hardly opened. Now I need a motion to, to...
Motion to wave design standard element number two for One Garfield Street Florence, map ID seventeen D dash zero eight one, to allow an alternative to the front door facing the street requirement.
Thank you. Second by John, all in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
We are unfortunately running ahead of schedule. Is there any, we could do the two ANRs right now?
The two ANRs have never materialized, so we'll go to the next item.
Which is Emerson Way?
Yes. So...
So we have, just by explanation, we, since we scheduled the agenda, we have to wait till seven twenty. I'm sorry.
So Emerson Way is the subdivision off of Berespit Road. On the south side of Berespit Road, it's been under construction for many years, and it's gone through multiple phases of develop, of getting to the stage where it is now. So sort of a phased build-out. The applicant currently has a tri-party, has a performance guarantee in the form of covenants on several parcels, as well as a tri-party agreement with the city and the bank to financially guarantee that the road work and the infrastructure, water pump house and everything gets built in accordance to the approved plans. They're at a point now where they, they actually don't need both types of performance guarantees. So they're, they were going to come in to adjust the tri-party agreement because it's, it's going to, it's getting close to expiration, but they also need to rewrite it, figure. So what they're asking the board is to consolidate their performance guarantee to one type, which would be a tri-party agreement, which is a financial performance guarantee, and then have the release of the lots. They have, I'm just gonna put these figures here. It's two, two hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars, I believe, and I just want to pull up the total figure. They've identified the items that are remaining to be done. DPW has signed off on that value, and they just need to put together the text of the agreement and have our city solicitor sign off on it. But basically, the, we can't, the mayor and the city solicitor can't sign off until the board approves the sort of, the transition from both forms consolidating to one. So it just takes a vote of the planning board to say, yes, it's okay to go to this financial guarantee instead of both a lock sale covenant and a financial guarantee. So the, what I was, what I'm gonna ask is that, or what they're asking for is a vote to release the covenants, and I have a document for that. So that would allow them to sell the remaining lots, build and sell the remaining lots, and then maintain this other agreement with the city about building out, finishing the rest of the infrastructure. But we wouldn't release this covenant release to them until we've got the final language of the tri-party agreement in place.
Who are the three parties to the tri-party agreement?
The developer, the bank, and the city. Yeah.
And this is for like sewer and stuff?
It's for the, it's for, so this subdivision doesn't have sewer. It's, I'm sorry. There, it's water, it's sewer, it's trees, it's curbing, it's pavement.
Oh, okay.
It's the entire build-out of the road. They've gotten the, they basically have done everything except the top coat on the final phase, and they just installed the water. They had to do a pump house for the water, which you may have remembered when they came back.
Yeah.
So that has just been finished. So they've sort of taken that off of the list of items that need to be completed. And so it's really down to sort of finishing out the subdivision. They're, they're at that sort of tail end.
So instead of holding lots, and buildable lots is kind of collateral. They just want to say, hey, we've got this much money, and we'll hold that collateral.
That's right, and it would be two hundred...
Because we want to sell the lots.
Yeah, that's right. And it would be two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars and forty...
Okay.
Two hundred sixty-three, forty-five, basically.
Not holding in cash, but...
The bank is holding back from, yeah, essentially, right.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Okay, so it was John and Mark.
It's one of those where I think it makes, I can so easily understand the cash covenant and the lot covenant doesn't, it's set with me right, so.
Well, you get to, I, I think at the beginning it makes sense, but when you get to the point where there's a few lots left, then...
Right.
Just keeps them honest.
Okay. Bear with us, we're trying to take care of some administrative business until we get to the seven twenty agenda item.
Too efficient.
Well, it's because I skipped so many steps. My madness here. We didn't have any minutes for this one?
I did not. I'm not sure. Yeah. Am I able to put them on the screen?
Well, one thing we can do is, we will actually, just as a foreshadowing, we will not be dealing with the seven fifty item tonight, so...
So disappointing.
Yep. The special permit for the one curb cut at Atwood Drive, likely Carolyn thinks may come to us on May eleventh.
Should, should we toss what we have or hang on to it? Or is it going to be replaced with something?
I would keep it for now. And then actually, at that time, I mean, you will, we'll have to officially vote to continue it to a date and time for that, because it's a, I'm not sure yet what on the site will change based on the stormwater. So the, I don't think the buildings will that are proposed, but...
We haven't opened this item yet, have we?
No.
So if we don't open it, we don't need to vote to continue it, do we?
You do, because it was set, otherwise we'd have to, you'd have to open it to continue it, otherwise we'd have to re-advertise. So if you just vote and continue it to the next meeting.
It says may be continued without opening.
Without discussion, I guess I should say. You can, you may, you just have to open it for the purposes of continuing it. So I think that's all the other business that we have. Is that on the...
That's the ANRs. Do you have slides from your trip you want to show us?
Not up there.
Are you Instagramming, Carolyn?
I will. I can tell you that we're, we're, as we did in the fall, we hosted two young professionals from Southeast Asia, and we're doing that again, starting, actually, they're coming on Saturday. They're both women, but from different countries. One is from the Philippines and the other's from Myanmar, and they're going to be here for a month. So they will likely come to one or more, public meetings, maybe a planning board meeting. They're studying, they're sort of in the environmental sustainability track that, on the program that they're here for. So you might see them in the coming months and, or the month. So that should be interesting to have them.
Have you spoken with them?
Just email. Yep.
Good, good language skills. I mean, will you have to be translating for them?
No, no, I think, yeah, it should be fine.
Yeah, I know.
Depends on what clock you use, right?
You know, actually, because we do this occasionally, what is the harm on running your clock with an insurance? Like, why, why put it on twenty instead of seventy?
Well, we've done that discussion. I mean, I've done that occasionally, and then it's not worked out so well. I know you're frustrated.
Yeah, people get mad if they show up for seven ten, because it starts at quarter of nine, you know, whatever, because the, the first one goes long.
Yep.
I don't know that this will affect anybody, but leading up to the next one, which, Dan, are you presenting in the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. For note of disclosure, just because of my work, I have occasion to work with the designers who are presenting, and that's the case tonight, that we're working with Tom Douglas Architects. But if anyone in the public that still remains feels that, or on the board doesn't think I can be impartial, which I, I don't have an issue with, I can recuse myself. Otherwise, I will hear this one through, so.
Thank you. So...
Recuse myself.
Any, any interest in Mark recusing himself?
He's just trying to get out of the meeting.
He's got another one if he gets out of this one.
I'm going to get a doughnut or something.
Set up my easel since there's only one more minute to go. Is he allowed to do that?
Yes. Yes.
Doesn't create, create an undue...
From a rule-based person like me, I'm sure you could guess.
I mean, it works what they're doing, but it's just a, before they, before this, came before of us, before us, I thought it was just an odd setup.
Which is driven by, I still, I mean, a hard time picture.
So like the...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, actually, when we, we looked at, it was just, the whole thing with the church was so, initially was so crazy, and wasn't, it was okay.
Wasn't no time.
Like, in, yeah.
Okay, we have arrived at seven twenty. I'd like to open the agenda item for special permit amendment, Unique Lodging LLC, to modify the number of units, creating five apartments and four lodging units at forty, at seventy-four Bridge Street, Northampton, map ID thirty-two A dash one seven seven. Do you have a motion to open public comment?
Presentation first.
Thank you. Hello. Would you like to tell us what you're up to?
Sure. My name is Dan Bonham. I work for Tom Douglas, here representing Unique Lodging LLC. They have a special permit that they are applying for an amendment to. And in essence, they're proposing no changes to the exterior of the buildings or the lot coverage. But currently, in the front building, they have one apartment, which is the owner's unit, and then four lodging units. And in the back, they have two lodging units and accessory storage and office space. And they would like to convert to four lodging units in the front, and then five dwelling units, so creating all the back into dwelling units. This is the existing site plan here. And then this is the proposed site plan showing parking for twelve cars, screening for the dumpster, screening for the cars parked on the side here. The large blank area is existing paving, pavement, and the lodging units are all just under, well, they're about eight hundred and twenty-five square feet each, so they're below one thousand square feet each. And essentially, I think that pretty much covers it. I did speak with Dave Valetta today from the DPW about sewage requirements et cetera. He is on board with it. Gave me verbal approval today, so.
Yeah, DPW didn't have any concerns.
Okay, so, I mean, this does affect both the water intake and the sewer coming out for more, more residents in that building.
Right.
Is there a...
The submittal indicates as far as square feet, that it, the lodging units are around five hundred square feet apiece?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you before. I thought you said they were a thousand.
The dwelling units, the new dwelling units will be under...
Dwelling units.
Yeah, thirteen hundred and fifty, I believe, each.
Here it says seven fifty-six.
Seven, sorry, that would be correct, seven fifty-six.
So there's no, the footprint does not change.
There are no changes other than turning a garage door into a entry door to the exterior of the buildings.
So the biggest change I see is that what used to be the storage for vehicles in the back of that property now has turned into vehicles dispersed around the property, and there are more of them.
Yeah. Yeah, we end up with basically allotment for more car parking, and one of them would have to park basically in front of what was a garage rather than inside the garage.
Is there any visitor parking in that story?
Uh, no, no.
Is, is there, I mean, is it fair to expect, and this is more a question to the rest of it, this property is only a block or two from town, so is it fair to hope that maybe we wouldn't be dealing with each unit having a car, or maybe not lot, keeping it there?
I guess I would.
We are providing a shed for like storage here as well, on site. And the, there's the traffic impact fee, which we, the owners offer to pay, so.
Can you just descri, I just was wondering, we had spoken about the dumpster area and the pickup. How does that parking space in front of that area where it's shown as the dumpster, how would that work?
Yeah, well, it's really just the rolling dumpster carts, the small. So, I mean, currently he has a large dump, dumpster there as he moves his office out. He might ever have need for, you know, quantity of trash. Right now, I think he has weekly pickup. He hasn't picked up as often as required for smaller rolling dumpsters.
So what you've just told me is that the rolling dumpsters can go around the cars?
Yeah. This area is currently paved here.
I believe that with, you mean, the rolling ones, you mean, the, the...
The plastic ones with...
I've got...
Yeah. I'm not sure what size they are, I'm sorry.
One cubic yard or, nine units are going to have, how many of those?
I don't have the answer to that question.
No way that, I mean, nine units would barely, barely be adequate to have a two-yard dumpster. But I guess, suppose that's their problem.
Lodging units themselves don't have cooking facilities in them?
So is there a kitchen?
Yeah, that's inconsistent.
Yeah. So there's, there is a kitchen here, and there, in the main room, main house in the owner's unit. And there are no kitchens in the, the lodging units in the main house. There are or will be kitchens in the dwelling units in the back.
But the people in the big house don't have access to the owner's kitchen?
Correct.
So they're just in a hotel room?
It's a suite hotel room, yes, basically.
You have to, excuse me. Can you, can you explain with the project, so it's a hotel?
He has a, I believe it's a rooming house license, and so they're sort of extended stay professors who are in town for a week or two, basically is who's using the space. And he has some extended stays he'd like to do in the back, which are, you know, maybe someone who's in town for, for a semester or longer. Still operating as a, a rooming house, lodging house, but not, not as a hotel per se.
Is it weird how long people can stay in a place that has no cooking facilities?
No. I don't know if under other codes, not for zoning purposes, no, but I couldn't tell you if there's anything for Board of Health or the building code. I, I don't know. But from a zoning perspective, there's no time limit for anything, even apartment rental. We don't say that you have to rent a minimum of thirty days or two days.
Maximum of, but they have kitchens.
Right, but it does, I'm just suggesting that we, it's not, it's silent in the zoning ordinance.
Got it.
The requirement of a lodging house does not include access to a kitchen?
Well, typically, our definition is that there's a shared kitchen, and that's how it's, how a lodging house is made up of lodging units where there's a shared kitchen facility.
So how is this qualified?
I thought there had been a shared kitchen in the main house originally. I think that's the way it was presented, so I don't know if that's changed over time. I think going back even to two thousand and seven, the last time this was here, I believe there was a shared kitchen. So I, I don't, that's the first I've heard. I don't know how that would...
So it's a special permit because it's a lodging?
House.
Right.
Right.
Because of the kitchen issue, because of the...
Yeah, and we don't allow hotels in the URC district, where we do allow lodging houses.
But this doesn't seem to qualify as a lodging house, because it doesn't have a central kitchen.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can...
The way that it's broken up, the original shared kitchen, it is also shared by the owner's unit. So, and that is, that is, there is access from the main corridor directly into it. And, I mean, I don't know exactly how the business operates on a day-to-day basis, but all one has to do is open that door, and there's your coffee maker, there's all your other kind of amenities.
So it's part of the owner's space, but it's not prohibited from guests?
That's my understanding, yes.
So the owner has a fifty-six hundred square foot easement unit?
Yep.
And he's going to share his kitchen with four lodging house units?
So, does he rent out, it's like a, it's more like a, it's like a B and B?
Yeah.
In a sense?
Yeah.
It's like an open. Long-term B and B.
Does he rent out rooms in his main house?
Actually, even in a B and B.
Yeah, there's sweets, so.
They just get served breakfast, they can't.
Yeah, but sometimes there's like an, I mean, it's like an open, you know, you can help yourself kind of.
Right.
I mean, that sounds like what this, so they do have access to the kitchen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the issue is to have the access to that kitchen, right?
Right.
Physical access to the kitchen, that's the thing.
Yeah. And there are two ways to get there, either from the second floor and down the stairs within the unit or from the main floor directly into that kitchen.
So in order to come from the second floor, they'd go through the owner's living area?
Um, yeah, yeah, well, it's a, it's kind of a back central stair, so there's two main stairs within the, the house. One that runs kind of across this way and then a more grand one runs this way in the front. Both of those have, you have access connecting both those central spaces on the second floor and on the first floor.
Any other questions? Are we still pondering the kitchen, have we sort of gotten to the bottom of that one?
I think.
I mean, yeah, because I thought a few minutes ago you said that they wouldn't have access, and so I was just, I don't know if.
Yeah.
Well.
Um, if the project.
They don't have kitchens in their units?
Right.
The owner has them.
The owner has one and they, he is hosting them very much, so it's, you know.
It's next door that way.
Relating it to a bed and breakfast is probably the most, um, simple way to explain it.
So let me just understand, the parking fee is, how, how many units they have in there?
There are nine units.
Nine, and you have twelve spots, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is, there is any ruling for a number of parking for occupancy, there is some relationship in the. That's why the mitigation thing?
Yeah, one, one per lodging unit and two per dwelling unit over one thousand square feet.
Ah, okay.
Only the owner's, only the owner's unit.
This is functioning as a lodging house currently?
For a long time.
How old is that development?
Um.
Like the units in the.
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven, yeah, yeah, right in the.
Maybe, maybe originally five and they came up for an amendment, so. For the back.
Yeah, yeah.
Garage.
But he, he bought the property with the license that it has for the type of business that he's running out of, so.
It was previously a lodging when it was bought, when it, oh, okay.
For, yeah.
Yeah.
A long, long time.
Carolyn, are you satisfied about the trash? I mean, it looks like to me at, at the end of that unit that there's room to put.
Yeah, I mean, they're, clearly they're going to need a full dumpster, but here says plenty of room for it.
Yeah, well, or four or five little dumpsters, if that's what it takes to get around cars.
Right, yeah. Right. The power gates, so actually people drive in and it's like a big estate that opens up.
Yeah, if you have the key fob, it will, you can enter a code or you can call into the owner.
And that's existing.
Yeah.
Right, huh.
It's usually open.
It's always open.
Yeah. Can't remember seeing it close, and I drove by a couple times and it seemed to always be open. The only other question I had staff brought up was the payment in lieu of, of two thousand versus, oh, no, it's a thousand per, for two spots, so it is two thousand, okay, okay.
So, I don't, I just want to discuss it, there's no need to condition the access to the kitchen, is there?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for that? Um, I'm interested in the fact that you've done it within the existing footprint, I mean, I'm happy to have more, you know, small units close to downtown.
Well, actually, aren't there fewer? There are seven now.
Seven going to nine.
Nine, yeah, they're turning.
Oh, but the, well, including the.
Garage.
Right, yeah.
But for the small ones, for, for lodging house.
Right.
It's going fewer.
Yeah.
I really.
These two in the back are currently categorized as lodging and we're converting them to dwelling because they have full kitchens.
Bring them to.
That's the plan.
I mean, it sounds to me like it's more like a hotel than, I, I have a feeling that access to the kitchen will turn out to be illusory. But I, you know, it's not, I guess, the worst thing in the world, it's maybe we have a need for hotel units in that part of town. And I, I guess, I mean, I don't know why, if we were serious about the definition of a lodging house, why wouldn't we require access to the kitchen? Since it seems pretty theoretical only.
I think, I think it's really more about ensuring that they're in compliance with their lodging house license and, um.
So they get inspected annually?
It's only licensing issue.
I don't know what the time period is, but I think that would be the case.
Right, they're more enforcement thing than a.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Right.
Right, more enforcement thing than a conditional thing, they're representing that it's a lodging house, it would do that, they have to meet the certain standards and they would, um, I don't know what the time, the inspection timing is, but because of its nature, its use, that it does.
And so just to reaffirm that there's no issue with the DBW on this project?
They had no concern.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts about it? No eye contact was made, anyone want to make a motion?
Is there any public?
Yeah, is there any public comment on this project?
No, no, I actually came to the reverse item, which I missed.
We were, we were quite quick with it, we all agreed to it, it was unanimous.
To change it or to keep it, I'm sorry.
Uh, we accepted the, as designed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, we could have settled that twenty minutes ago for you, sorry.
That's all right, I'm enjoying just hearing.
Some make you better than others. Um, can I get a motion on this, and, well, well, one thing I would like to say that we need a condition for prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall submit as offered a one-time payment in lieu of traffic mitigation for the, um, new increase of trips, twenty-two, two thousand dollars to be used to offset impact of additional peak hour trips generated by the units.
With stated condition, I move approval of special permit amendment for Unique Lodging LLC to modify the number of units, creating five apartments, four lodging units at seventy-four Bridge Street, North Hampton, map ID thirty-two A dash one seven seven.
Clearly done, thank you, John. Second? Second by Tess, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we are almost at seven forty.
So I've been running a lodging house all this time for my kids, basically, with access to the kitchen.
That's right, yeah.
Who knew?
Yeah, yeah.
That sounded awfully familiar to me.
I know.
I think I could just see the light go off, you see a new business opportunity, right?
Yeah, I think I live in a lodging house, let's go on.
Why does North Hampton not allow hotels?
Well, this is an urban residential seed district, so it's not the central business district. In the central business district, hotels are fine.
Okay.
It's just, this is the edge of.
Yes, it's right on the edge.
Ground three is one parcel away.
Got it, got it.
So, um, that's.
I wonder if the building inspector is still the point person on doing the lodging inspection, or is that by complaint?
No, I, well, I don't know if you know about those inspections, but I think for certain uses, there are regular inspections, so, you know, just like as in hotels, they do fire inspection and, you know, these other.
Right, well, I could imagine, you know, you would want, if you didn't have access to a kitchen, you would want to have some certainty that people weren't creating makeshift kitchens in bedroom units.
The question is like, what is the definition of a kitchen, I mean, my dad runs a bed and breakfast in Hawaii and he's like always skirting this, this, this rule. And it's like, well, a kitchen is any place with a, like, with a stove, well, that, does that include a hot plate?
Right.
You know, it's like.
Right.
I don't know.
Right. Well, and IKEA is selling a six hundred dollar kitchen now, I mean, you can actually. Anyway, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Um, I think we can.
Seven forty.
Seven forty, open the item zoning ordinance amendment to three fifty dash four point seven and code ordinances one fifty-six dash six B to expand effective dates, permit time limits from two to three years, consistent with Municipal Modernization Act. About that, Carolyn?
Um, yeah, so, over the, since, um, um, I guess sort of to back it up a little bit, the, um, in, for a long time, the state's, um, the statutes allowed permits that are issued by businesses to be valid for two years. You'd have to substantially exercise, you'd have to exercise them, um, to a certain degree within that two-year window. And two thousand and eight hit and affected the economy and the legislature passed several consecutive bills that temporarily extended the time by which anybody for any permit that was issued throughout the Commonwealth would have an additional, first it was, um, uh, two years and then it was four years, um, and that's applied across the board, nobody had to do anything with their permit, it was just decreed at the state level, your permit's valid for additional four years. And then, um, that ended, I think, well, actually, two thousand and seventeen, so, um, in August, as part of this huge bill that was passed, this Municipal Modernization Act, the, um, state passed a provision that enabled local governments to increase, sort of on a permanent basis, that, um, time period from two to three years. But it didn't decree uniformly, it just said, if a community wants to do that, they can. When it passed, I think there was a little bit of confusion because it's certainly from our office, we thought that it meant, oh, it's three years now and we don't have to do anything. And then we realized that the language was that you can opt to do, to do that. So this is merely to, um, this change in the permit time limits would affect, um, zoning-related issued permits, but also central business architecture permits, because they follow the, um, site plan and special permit timelines. And the idea is to provide the maximum allowed under state statute and not, and, and under the, with the idea that you all are granting these permits for, um, hopefully, be, because they comply with the zoning and there shouldn't be a reason to pull back on that after one more additional year, they should still be valid in three years, so why not take that to the next step? So that's really.
I, I guess that would be my, my only question. And maybe it would be a fairly rare occurrence, but, you know, could it ever be the tail wagging the dog of, you've got this person, they've got this permit, it's available, it's open for three years? Something larger, I mean, could they hold up something that maybe the city, if something changes, the city wants to do something, I mean, I, I guess, could it end up being an obstacle to somehow a larger effort?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there are, obviously, we, um, you all have been part of the conversation for changing zoning and allowing different things or, or pulling back and restricting certain things, so there, I could see potentially an issue where someone may have been issued a permit, and then the zoning changes and maybe, um, that permit might not be allowed under a new zoning, but there's also a whole host, there's a whole provision for pre-existing non-conformities as well, so, you know, there's, there will always be those situations, I think, no matter how long a permit is issued.
And there's a mechanism by which you could handle them and.
Yeah.
Have developments here typically taken, or, you know, have people really like come up to that line of two years and been like, oh, my gosh, we've got to really get started or?
Yeah, so we've had a few occasions where people have, um, for whatever reason, they're, it's longer to get financing or they, um, things change, like if it's a smaller project and family structures change or whatever, they can't quite get their project off the ground yet, um, and they've had to come back for an amendment just to push that back. You've probably approved a few of those, in fact, the Hap Housing project, um, you approved an extension of time on that one. Going back to sort of before the legislature adopted the emergency sort of immediate extension, um, the police station project had to come back for a date extension, that was around two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight anyway, but, um, that one came back. So there've been a few instances of that.
And it's not an incentive to just delay?
Well, that is the worry that I have, that a property is unsightful, it's not being developed as fast as it would be, um, you know, it can, it can go another year before we can really do anything about it.
I assume the thought is that if they needed, or they wanted to do this, I mean, that they had a reason for wanting to do it.
Right, generally speaking, I would think if the permit is actually old.
Because it's costing them money.
Right, it doesn't, it's not cost-effective to sit on it, some local developers notwithstanding.
Yes, I'm thinking about that.
Any other comments or thoughts or questions about this for Carolyn?
Are other, like, are we sort of in the same timeframe as other cities, or like around the state, like is it, or have other cities already adopted the?
Um, you know, I didn't do that search, that's probably, that's a good question, I should probably do that.
Take it back.
Before this council, because that'll probably come up again. I don't know how many municipalities have gone ahead and, and done that yet, because it was just adopted in August.
August, right.
Do you know how other states, um, if Massachusetts is saying three years, up to three years, is that in line, do you know, with other states, or is it?
Um, yeah, two and three-year time windows are pretty typical, I think.
Can I get a motion for this one?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Carolyn wants to make the change to the ordinance for two to three years.
So recommending to see council this.
Yes, oh, that's what we are recommending.
And that's not a joint committee, right, we don't need to be there.
Right, it doesn't, this one, so that's a good question, sorry, so John was second. So, um, it does need to go to legislative matters, I think that, um, you know, it's just, they're meeting May eighth. They typically, if they don't have a joint hearing with the planning board, would want to be so the last board, but the last subcommittee before it goes back to full council. I didn't really see a need to try to coordinate, um, a meeting, a joint meeting for this one, so that's why.
So the motion will be to recommend to them that they accept the three years?
I still second. I knew that's what Alan meant.
Right.
Thank you. How can you be against municipal modernization after all?
Right.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm going to go, I'm going to put this on the, um, screen.
Yeah, this one is a little more complicated, this is the map story.
Yeah.
Some of you weren't.
Wait, she only allotted five minutes for it, so, I mean, how could it be more complicated?
It's not, it's easier to see. Okay, so I just. So, back in, um, March, um, we had a joint public hearing with the Legislative Matters Committee to expand the, what we call the forty R. to expand the, what we call the 40R district and make some text changes to allow for that expansion. 40R is a provision in the state statute that's outside of zoning and allows, is, is a, basically, housing production incentive by the state. And so, um, with 40R, if you draft and adopt legislation at the local level, ordinances at the local level, and the state approve, the state has to approve that language, but, um, if you then build under that provision and permit housing units under that 40R provision, there is a, so far, there's been a pot of money set aside from the state as an incentive to the municipality for the construction of affordable housing units. So the first 40R district was created at this, at Village Hill back in 2007. Um, we knew that we were going to have affordable housing units there, and that's on the screen in this, the green and blue area, I can zoom in on the next slide, I think, shows it are...
Down in the left-hand corner.
Yeah, so this, oops, geez, okay. So the green area and the blue were the districts created initially in 2007. So, um, and the city has received money from the state for construction. There's an incentive, um, amount of money that the city received. And then for each housing unit after that that's built, theoretically, the city would get additional money from the state. We've put that towards, the initial pot of money that we received for the state hospital has been put towards, um, design of, um, traffic improvements at the state main elm intersection there. So that's what's helping move that whole piece forward. This, um, modification for the expansion initially came, which is what we had the public hearing for in March, was to expand, and this is next to the lodging house project that you all just reviewed. It's this, well, it's not showing up very well on the screen, but the light blue in the upper right corner. And that's just one parcel, but we knew that Valley Community Development Corporation was going to expand the number of affordable, um, units there. And the only way they could do that was either through, had to do, have, they would have to have some zoning relief, either through 40B, which is an affordable housing development program whereby it would go to the zoning board, or if we rezone this 40R, not only would they do their project, but the city could get some incentive payments for that. So, we had the public hearing in March about that. The state hadn't quite finished reviewing our language modify, language changes, so it couldn't go back to city council. In that intervening time that we were waiting, Mass Development announced that they had granted the, um, development rights for the former Transformations Development Project, the state hospital, to, um, a combination of Valley CDC and, and Community Builders of the state hospital. So this purple area up there at the state hospital is the land that has been now, um, set aside for the purposes of developing additional affordable housing units by Community Builders and Valley CDC. They will come back to the board, obviously, for approval because it's a much different development scheme than was approved by Transformations. But because we know that that's going to be affordable housing units, we wanted to, at the same time, wrap this piece of the 40R expansion into the package that had already been moving itself through the process of approval. But that triggered a requirement for us to have another public hearing. So this functions as the public hearing for this piece of it. It will also go back to legislative matters. I didn't try, again, I didn't try to pull you together because that was, that's a little bit complicated, and I figured we went through it for the big, the other change and that we could do it separately this time. So, um, the reason why we're doing this public hearing again is just really to add this map change, and there's a minor text change that just acknowledges what we would call as a sub-district C at Village Hill. And the state is also, was fine with wrapping that into their current review process. And they should be done reviewing that by next week in time to go to council.
Two questions. So the, the Transformations Development, that included some, I thought, affordable housing areas, but it wasn't under 40R?
They, Transformations was not proposing any, um, affordable housing as defined by the state. So we're not, it would, they were proposing to build more modest market rate housing units, not technically affordable.
But that was within a, the, this 40R designation, did that exist prior to...
Not in this part of the state hospital. So where that purple outline is, is really most of the Transformations, um, former...
Right.
Land that was allocated for the development under Trans, by Transformation.
Number two is the, the, the blue outline. Aren't those the mons, aren't those the big, single-family homes? So that's not 40R?
It is 40R, but the way they define, it, what it, um, the reason we did that, um, is the way the state spells out the incentive. So you can create an area where you want housing development. They'll only give you an incentive payment for the affordable units. But they also want to see production of all types of housing.
What is an affordable unit?
So, it's, it meets the needs of people who are, um, have an income that is 80% or less of the area median income.
Which is what?
So it varies by community, so right net, and it's done by, based on your family size. I'm, this is kind of a made-up number because I haven't checked it. So in the ballpark of, um, I think it's around 40 to $50,000 a year for a family of three, I'm going to say, two or three. So, and that may be a little bit high, so I don't want you to pin your, but it's in that, like, high 30s to high 40s.
So does that mean that, that's a question that, is there rent? Are they selling a house to these people, or?
Um, it doesn't matter. You can do rentals or homeownership units. But what, um, when you are creating these units that you want to have count on the state's housing inventory, you have to go through a specific lottery, uh, what amounts to a lottery process to qualify, people who have, who qualify based on their income to even be eligible to buy or rent those units. And so there's a very strict guideline on how you qualify people who are eligible to rent or buy.
So it's sort of like a section eight type, right? Put with the ability to buy a house?
Yes, essentially.
So, back to Mark's question a bit. So, 40R encourages development? It incentivizes affordable dwell?
Right.
Okay. You actually, I mean, there is a...
It does both. So there's an incentive for the total number of units you could build in an area. So there's a pay, there's, there's sort of a two-step incentive from the state. One is, if you create this area where you have higher density and you allow more units, you get a, um, a certain amount of money, and it's based on how many units are allowed in that geographic area. And there are different tiers. Um, and then, so you get that right up front. Then, as the area builds out, you don't necessarily have to build all the units that are allowed in that area, but as they build out, for every affordable unit that gets built, then you get another payment on a per-unit basis. So there is an incentive just for the units. I mean, just for the units, and then an additional one for the affordable. Yeah.
Do you have a question?
So the affordable is obvious. The units is to keep density high and sprawl low. Is that the objective?
Yeah, so they want to encourage communities to, um, build housing where it makes sense. You can't, you don't get approval for a 40R district way out.
Double checking. And then that, Tess, I'll get you. Go ahead.
Oh, right now?
Yeah.
So I know in our zoning, we don't, in a general zoning district, we're never going to spot zone and, you know, kind of do something small-scale, but the overlay is very parcel-specific. Is there, is there...
Building-specific.
I mean, is there any reason, like, not, like at Village Hill, for example, to just make the entire thing, even though we know that there are units that are not affordable and that are already built? Is there a downside? Like, is it cleaner for you guys or for the state?
It's cleaner for us, because what happens is if you just put on the overlay and connect it, so we, we started out under that scenario, just connecting it because it looked cleaner.
Yeah.
Um, but then you have to subtract the roadways, and then you have to subtract the land that's already developed, and that had, that...
Oh, okay.
Rearranges the calculation for how much new development you're actually able to build.
So with this overlay, it's better to just do parcel-by-parcel basis?
I'm still missing, my question's like yours, but I'm missing, why wouldn't you put this, what is the, the state's resistance to us putting a 40R in, in a very large area of the urban part of town? I mean, so if you got an affordable unit, you would get paid for it. I mean, that seems like the incentive is for the city to have 40R district overlay on a large area, and there's, I'm missing something.
Um, it, it's very, um, it's, it's, um, articulated very, um, I guess, strictly in terms of what counts as already developed area versus what could potentially be developed. And so it makes it complicated to go through that whole calculation if you take a large area that's partially developed and parti, that's my easiest answer is, based on the way they've set it up, it makes it hard to do.
But what you're doing in lieu of that is finding properties that look like they're going to qualify and trying to catch a moving train.
So we don't leave money on the table, basically. There's no reason to leave state money untapped.
Oh, I...
So, yeah.
Right. I mean, we've talked about bef, we, we've talked about when we've known projects that might come forward, whether or not there would be affordable units about putting an overlay because then that allows more density than the underlying district would normally allow. So in an area where it makes sense to do that, um, we've, um, talked about doing that in various locations. You know, a while after we did this first one, we were thinking maybe the VA, that was before the VA had a whole new program because of all the conflicts we've had. So it does, I think, you're right. We, we're trying to be more strategic about where we do these things, but, um, sometimes it's not.
Yeah. It just begs the question, why were we doing it down to the lot level? You know, that was, and, and you do have to go, I see you have to go through the process with the state to submit and get, you know, get all the numbers right and do all of that to be ready to receive their money.
Yeah.
And so I was just wondering why a larger umbrella wasn't the approach.
Yeah.
But... Ann?
Am I correct that this originally had had a co-housing unit?
That's what we approved.
Right.
Yeah, the transformation.
And then they have given, they've held back some property for the potential of that co-housing?
They've held, right, Mass Development, so on this far, I don't know if you'll see my cursor here. It's disappearing.
It did. It went off to the right.
So here's the track. No, you can't see it. So, um, uh, basically, do you see where the, um, purple line jets in like that?
Yes.
That's the space.
Well, that's part of, that's the detention pond, but it's just below that. This area actually covers that, um, uh, cluster or co-housing because, um, those, that area will be developed somehow, so we would put that into sort of the initial incentive, um, funding that we might get. But, and we don't know what will happen. So Mass Development has said that they will hold back five-plus, five-and-a-half acres if a developer is willing to come forward and build within that five-and-a-half acres. They have no problem with them doing a separate project in addition to...
Inside, inside the zone, not outside.
Yeah. It happens to be inside this zone, but for, because this goes, this is a little bit bigger than what, um, Mass Development has allocated for, um, TCB, or, yeah, Community Builders and...
Okay.
So the Community Builders project does not include what was going to be co-housing?
That's right.
What is co-housing?
So that area is just, remains under the control of Mass Development?
Right. So far, all of it is still Mass Development until, yeah.
The project that we had previously approved from Hospital Hill had a, um, separate living space, joint-use buildings, and it was sort of a cooperative living arrangement. So that was, that's what we're kind of referring to.
It essentially, it's just like a townhouse community, only it's more intentional, where a group of people come together and say, we want to create a, um, a design for, um, shared living spaces and, you know, a shared sort of communal structure. But from a land use perspective, it really functions like, um, condominium property. You know, where you've got joint ownership of the land, but you might have separate units on a parcel.
Okay, any other questions about the overlay for the 40R? Buddy settled on this one? Love to, love to have you do it.
Zoning, move approval of zoning ordinance amendment and modification to 350-20-20.941. 40R overlay to create a new overlay district associated, and associated text changes to expand the 40R district at the former state hospital, Village Hill project.
We're recommending...
Approval.
Approval. And Ann seconds it. All in favor? Thank you. We are now past the 750 item, which is a special permit for more than one curb cut, site plan reduction. Required parking in Atwood Drive LLC, major project to construct a three-story, 66,000 square foot and four-story, 77,000 square foot office building with associate site work at 23 Atwood Drive, North Hampton, MAP ID 39-41, comma, 43.
Move to continue, 7:11.
Tess moves to continue.
Seven.
At 7:00 PM?
Mark seconds it. All in favor of continuing? Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Oh, John's slow.
Move to adjourn by Tess.
Oh, sorry.
Second by John.
Sleepy wheel. Slow on the uptake.